Good evening, welcome to the NORAD Board of Education meeting for September 21st, 2017. I would like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Strasser, could you call the roll place?
Scott Dracy.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Miracle.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the adoption of the agenda. I would like to make a motion that we approve item four. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Scott Dracy. Call the roll place.
Horsley.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Item five is approval of minutes for the regular board meeting on August 17th, 2017. I would like to make a motion that we approve item five. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Call the roll place.
Horsley.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Item number six is presentation. Ms. Seba.
Thank you. We are so proud and so grateful to an organization, actually two organizations, Liftco Contracting and Ernst Concrete, as well as Sunbelt Tools. These three organizations work together to provide some new concrete work that needed to take place at Norwood U. So we certainly appreciate their efforts. We want to recognize them for donating their time, their talents, and in some cases even their tools. So we're going to call your name and ask that you come up to proceed your certificate. Our first recipient is Chuck McFarland with Liftco Contract. We're going to ask you to stay here, Chuck, okay? Our next recipient is Han Zimmerman with Ernst Construction. And we'd hoped someone from Sunbelt could join us, but it looks like they were not able to make it tonight, but we're so grateful for their effort. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I have to say thank you. I think everybody else is going to get a picture too, but thank you so much.
My pleasure.
You're appreciated.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Oh, shock.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Stay here, we want to get a photo with you.
What year are you? My year.
All right, a 98 grad.
Okay, can we just get a little closer?
I'm going to squeeze in between you two.
Okay, perfect. It's a little dark.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, our next presentation is from our GEAR Up Director, Maureen Heinz. Welcome, Maureen.
Thank you, Kayla. Yes, this is Kayla Rico. Kayla is one of our College and Global Chief or Director at College and Career Access at Cincinnati University Collaborative, and has now become connected to GEAR Up as our boss's boss. And we're very excited to have her here. She wanted to see a board meeting and see Norwood, and she's going to go to the parent meeting, which is occurring immediately after this meeting on financial review. So, good to see you guys. How's it going? If you could just pass these down. There's a pile for each of you. I know it'd be brief, as you all know, sending them very quickly. Shall we have one for everyone?
Yep.
I wanted to give you... Okay, already got it. One. Okay.
That was okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
I wanted to give you a brief overview of everything we have planned this year, and to remind you of all of our goals and all the money and all the excitement that we had last year. So we're just going to go in order. I'm not going to read you the documents. I'm just going to bring to your attention so that tonight, next to your bed stand, you can be reading all night, or tomorrow morning while you're reading practice. And they're all color-coded. So on the blue document, we have the GEAR Up Ohio Goals, just to remind you about the academic performance, the graduation rate, the family knowledge, but most importantly now, in year four, or in year four, the self-sustaining, is that when we pack up and go after the seven years, that this wonderful community will continue our work, which I'm very confident they will because of all the support we've had from the parents, the staff, you all, everyone. It is truly a family and a team effort, and it'll show in the next few documents. Behind this year four of all our responsibilities, how we're broken down by grade level. Jamie is with Tom right now, leading with senior parents, which is very exciting. Our goals for the high school for this year, our post-secondary advising, our NAVIANS, now we're in year two full-blown, teachers, parents, staff, test prep, everyone's using it, college visits, very exciting. We had 14 freshmen on the bus at early release days who go to Mount St. Joe. We had 28 kids, but 14 of them are freshmen. Isn't that neat? We go on early release days, as you guys know, and in-service days to visit all the colleges, and Kayla has a lot of connections at the colleges, which comes in very handy. But on our list, we're going to UC Blue Ash, Mount St. Joe, Wright State, Good Sam, Bowling Green, we're going to Miami, Cincinnati State, NKU. Oh, there you go, you can scrape from Miami. OSU and OU and Wittenberg. And we choose these schools based on the students' input from NAVIANS. We just don't sit down and say, "Where do we want to go?" It's always where the students want to go, and we try not to repeat so that they know. Because a girl said, "Oh, are we going..." I said, "When's the last year? She'd been on the bus," you know, because I want them to realize that it is a privilege that we get to go on early release days and on in-service days. So it's been really taking off, so we're very excited about that. Ignited in year two, the freshman mentors, I think they're going to be part of Mr. Winterod's presentation next month when it is student letter at the board meeting, so you'll have the pleasure of meeting those mentors. Service chiefs is up and running. Ooh, they've decided to go on the road now. We were at the Buddy Walk at Torrey Point all day, Mrs. Heinz, with Down Syndrome, and our students danced, they were greeters, they did everything, and they had the time of their life. And today, a little moment, was superhero day for homecoming week, and a couple of them picked Down Syndrome kids to be their heroes, and wore their shirts and bracelets today. That's how powerful our Norwood students are. So, test prep, Top Gear, very big. We hired Claire Browning, and she's a math teacher, and she's good, really good with the ACTA, because it is on our report card this year, and we have a big focus. Mr. Winterod's been very supportive. We are supporting his efforts. And next Tuesday, matter of fact, we test the entire junior class. GEAR Up does with the help of the staff and the administration to get their scores back, so that way all year, our teachers can be working on it in their core classes and during their concrete. We get so much use out of that advisory, everyone. It's a wonderful blessing, so we're going to throw that out there. Lunch and lunch, we had a chef yesterday. We broke all records, 48 students. Rumor thought he was bringing chicken, and I told them he wasn't bringing chicken, but they were okay because he worked at Eagle. He was the chef at Eagle at OTR, but they loved him, and we had pizza and they were fine. And we're continuing our Dayton Ramsey work. Miss Burge is doing it up here at the high school now. We were able to get through the curriculum, and then we are obviously doing it at the middle school. The science collaboration starts next week. The science teachers of Norwood High School will be going to UC Blue Ash to shadow the science teachers for the day, and then UC Blue Ash's science teachers will be here in November. And they love it. They're all going wherever they do, they keep emailing me, they're very excited. They have to send back to high school, some of them, they said, in like 20 years. I'm like, "It'll be fine." What do we do? I'm like, "It'll be fine." Student Ambassador Program, that is new this year. They have launched our National GEAR Up Week. They were our top two students from either the grade level, have done a great job. Flipping over to middle school, we have NAVIANS, we have GEAR Up Monday, we have the GM Vice President coming next month, we have speaker from a college coming this month, we have, we just locked in the junior basketball coach in February. So we have all the seventh and eighth graders in a room for 30 minutes, one Monday a month, and we, in the auditorium there, we motivate them. The College and Career Fair is on the schedule. If you'd like to come volunteer today, we're at Exploration and Dayton Ramsey. But just a couple data points. So, as you see on the middle school sheet, we served 320, total middle schools were served, 200 attended college visits at NKU and Wright State, 222 of them did the NAVIANS assessment, such as the career strength and score, 134 completed Dayton Ramsey. Then when you flip it over to the high school, the class of 2017 were offered $700,000 worth of scholarship pledge this year, including GEAR Up, including the State University, including our awesome Norwood Foundation. That was the total. That is truly documented because Jamie is a lawyer and does everything exactly by the letter with her data, so it's $700,000. Then total expenditures, that's my part, was the $270,000, or almost $271,000 we spent on Norwood School District. We gave out $71,700, and that is official as of today because they have to have their butts in the seats to get the check, and it's usually the third week of September to check to go out. We can't send that money to the college till we know that they've arrived, and so they have arrived. 604 students at the high school, 572 instances of students attending visits. So 572 times in the year, a Norwood High School kid was on a college campus. That's pretty intense, isn't that a great, I love that one. And then 304 total applications. So it was a great year last year. Okay, we're moving on. Here's our fourth gate, the month of white cheek. It's basketball month next month, then it's application month. Tonight is the financial month. You'll see all the trips we're taking. We start the ACT prep. These are our ambassadors. These are all our testing and everything going on. Then the next page is the middle school, and we are very active to middle school, continuing to be. We are having a great relationship with our new principal, Mr. Miller. He is coming from the high school. He was very familiar, and he's very on board with us. So now we have our middle school calendar. Big change though, October 26th, the students, the little seventh graders told me they wanted to go to Bearcat Country, so I said, "Brian, we gotta switch the trip." They don't want to go to Wright State, they want to go to UC Maine. So Kayla helped us get in because it's really hard to get in with seventh graders, and we're in. So we're going to UC Maine. I just didn't want to run off the document all over again, but I want you guys to know that when you hear the kids talk about it. And then the career fair, and then of course we'll bring the eighth graders to NKU, our GEAR Up Mondays. This is National GEAR Up Week. You're very lucky you're on campus. Orange sheet is all the activities. We've done all, we've jeopardy, door, board, scavenger hunts, butt fun. Here's all the middle school activities. This is the ACT. Now, this is very exciting. Tomorrow's the last day of registering the ACT, and our seniors have taken a knockover. This is their last big shot. And Jamie and Tom have been non-stop registering too. So taking that test in March has been very powerful. We're seeing the effects in the last two weeks. They're like, "We gotta take it again, we gotta get the scores." They realized the ACT and the GP has died to the mic. So we have been flooded with registrations, and this will be there. This is the prep for those seniors during advisory again, with Claire doing one-on-one, hands-on. We have NAVIANS test prep, and we bought mastery prep. We bought a whole new curriculum because Claire, you know, she researched all summer, you know, Cambridge, Princeton, Torch Prep, all of that, and we picked the best. And it's very teacher-driven, very. And Mr. Hunt's been great working with Claire, and so it's not just from us, it's from our staff too. So it's wonderful stuff. So that's the ACT, and then this semester so far, we have Hampton Hampton, Journey Advisory, UC Blue Ash, Dayton, Cincinnati State, Lufton, Miami Hamilton, Bowling Green, big hit today, Bowling Green, Mr. Shank right there, and everyone loves Mr. Shank, so that will be in 19 soon. University of Akron is Monday, UC is Tuesday, Dayton is Wednesday. Just a little tidbit, the foster boys went to Dayton. So Dayton called us to come. They were like, "Well, we love these fosters. We're coming to Norwood for a visit." So they've never called us. I always have to call them. So I was like, "Why, do you want to come?" And so it just makes a difference when we get a Norwood student. That's what happened with Cora being up at Bowling Green. These admissions people, they know they love Norwood kids, so now they want to come, visit with our students, and just help us with the journey. And every journey's different as we know. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Good, you're great. Okay, thank you so much. Good to see you all.
Appreciate it.
Oh, you're so welcome. I have to go now to help Tom and Jamie.
All right, we'll move on to item seven, Education Committee. Ms. Chair Scott Dracy.
Ms. President. For the Education Committee, I would like to make a motion for approval of following items. The approval of memorandum of understanding between Children's Hospital Medical Center and the Norwood City School District, the approval of scheduled LP meeting for 17, 18 school year as listed, and approval of student trips.
We have a motion for approval for items seven, A, B, and C. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Call the roll place.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Horsley. Yes. Item number eight, Personnel Superintendent Recommendations. Ms. Seba.
Madam President, the board, I have a number of recommendations to consideration. Resignation, employment, personnel, educational aides and student assistant aides, change of status, resolution to hire, non-직원 as well as advisors for your supplemental contracts under athletics and student activities, avenues for succession staff, and I think that is considered our recommendation.
I would like to make a motion that we approve items eight, A through B, actually A, B, one through five. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Scott Dracy. Call the roll place.
Who moved that again, please?
I made the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, a second.
Horsley.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
And then we also have item eight, C, which is the approval of NORAD Police Department Officers and Hamilton County Sheriff's Department of Officers for security detail for the 2017-2018 school year. I would like to make a motion that we approve item eight, C. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Call the roll place.
Horsley.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Moving on to item nine, Policy Committee. Mr. Scott Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. There are new policies to report on this front.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10, Building and Ground Committee. Mr. Tim Bryant.
Yes, Madam President. With the forge approval, I'd like to list item A, one through five for approval, one being Norwood Christmas Town for December 1st and 2nd, Middle School Gym, Level B, the recreation swimming lessons September through November for 2017, and February and May 2018, Level B, and then one, or three, four, and five is for basketball practice for the middle school gym, elementary schools, listed below.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval for item 10, A, one through five. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Call the roll place.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes. Item 11 is the Finance Report. Mr. Ken Miracle.
Thank you, Madam President. My recommendation of committee, I'd like to make the motion for item 11A, Approval Financial Reports. Item A, one, financial summary. Two, the appropriations and budget update. Three, the check register and four, the bank reconciliation. Item B, approval of Hamilton County Educational Service Center and Norwood City School District Service Agreement. Item C, approval of 21st Century Grant Pay Scale. And item D, approval of athletic weights per game.
Thank you. We have a motion for items 11A through D. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Scott Dracy. Call the roll place.
Miracle.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Horsley.
Yes. Item 12 is the Hearing of the Public. We do have one request to address the NORAD Board of Education. This is Mr. Brent Leon on Sharpsburg Elementary PTO, discrepancies between the elementary schools.
Sure, come up to vote, remember.
Sure, yeah, you can come up. I just want to let you know that residents wishing to speak to the board should fill out the form as you have, and we just ask that speakers will have about five minutes to address the board.
Thanks very much. I've been in a steep learning curve with what you're doing and some of the things that are happening here, but I'm gaining more respect as I'm learning more about them. I want to say how proud I am to be here at Norwood. I want to also say that I'm so proud to have my children at Sharpsburg. We've had one child that is at Starlows was reading, and he was below grade level, now he's on grade level. I give total credit to those teachers. He was advanced in math. I give credit to them for that as well. We work with him, of course, but we wouldn't know what to do without those professionals. I was crying with one of those professionals two nights ago at our PTO meeting because I brought up some statistics, and they're statistics, so there may be debate about what to do about them, about what can be done about them, what can't be done about them, but statistics are statistics, and when they're publicly available statistics, you want to verify that they're true, but it's hard to argue statistics. Statistics may be statistics, but they hurt feelings, and I hurt some feelings at Sharpsburg. I didn't want to hurt feelings, but I'm glad that we're starting to have a conversation. I've made a couple folks at the tables here aware of these, and I haven't gotten much response. And what I love about Norwood is that I can go and see people, and I was talking with Mr. Miracle before, not only see them, but renew my faith in the goodness of people and that they want to do the right thing. And I'm here today because I hope that a name with a face and a passion will get a response. Some of these statistics, we can say that things fluctuate, but some things, I think, need to be addressed, and no one on the PTO and the parents and the community members that met over the summer with Mr. Modo, none of us expected immediate changes, but they were denied in terms of that there were any problems, and again, statistics don't lie. To then be ignored was kind of another hit to these community members. I have to say, that's driven us. I just don't want it to divide us. So I'm going to renew my call. I'm going to send an email now that there's a name with a face, and ask that these statistics be looked at, and I have faith in the goodness of everybody at this table and in the candidates that I believe will be elected again, in their goodness, and that things may not change quickly, but if we ignore issues, they won't ever change. So, that being said, I wanted to make it public. The PTO is going to have an event on October 24th. We're inviting the board here, as well as the candidates that will be running to a public event. We're hosting it. It will be at 6 o'clock at the elementary school on the 24th of October. That's a Tuesday. It's two weeks before Election Day. And of course, as a nonprofit, we can't support any one person, but we can be informative and help make informed decisions, and help people make informed decisions. And that's what we're hoping to do with this event. So we hope that some of you can make it, not only as board members, but as community members, whether you're leaving these positions, and by the way, again, thanks for your service, Mr. Miracle, I know personally, and others have been doing this for a long time. Thank you. But I know you won't just stop caring, and I hope that you'll be at this event. I can give you details if you'd like, an email and other ways, but we're just forming this. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Item number 13 is Board Announcements. Are there any announcements from the board? Moving on to 14, Superintendent's Report. Ms. Seba.
Thank you, Madam President and the board. We do have wonderful news to share. Actually, it was last Saturday, the Norwood High School marching band competed for the first time at Bishop Fenwick Band Competition, and the band placed second out of seven bands in their class. We have to mention who they beat. So they beat Holmes High School, Mason County, Bellevue, McNicholas, Bishop Fenwick, and for the first time ever, Indian Hill. And so the band was also second in color guard and first in percussion, so we want to say congratulations to those marching Indians. We also want to say congratulations to Dylan Daniels for making the Cincinnati Youth Wind Ensemble. This is a high-performing honor band group in the region, and they only accept the top players. Also, the University of Cincinnati Blue Ash is celebrating their 50th anniversary on September 28th, and we are grateful for their continued partnership, and we will be there to wish them all the best at a special event. On September 29th, almost 70 of our elementary students will be taken to the University of Cincinnati Blue Ash for dental cleaning, fluoride treatment, and possibly x-rays, and tour their campus. My new Mrs. Heinz will be very pleased about that. The University of Cincinnati does pay for the buses, and the event is organized by our very own district nurse, Kathy Strasser, and the UC Smile program. We're excited that the University of Cincinnati was awarded a grant, and we are among a number of schools to be included as a recipient of the efforts. This is called the HEMI program, and HEMI stands for Higher Education Mentoring Initiative, and the effort is to have 100% of the Hamilton County Foster Youth, graduate high school, and plan to continue their post-secondary education and training, and to become self-sufficient. So thank you to the University of Cincinnati and the HEMI program for including Norwood in their efforts and ensuring the implementation of the program that will take place in grades nine through 12. Our preschool programs at Sharpsburg Elementary and William Dutton Elementary have both been awarded a five-star rating for meeting the quality standards established by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Department of Education. The five-star award is the highest possible award to be given. Step Up to Quality is a five-star quality rating program, and it's an improvement system as well, and it's created to recognize and promote early learning and development that meet the quality standards over and above health and safety licensing requirements, and our school is recognized, so we're so proud of that banner. We also want to let you know that Hospital 410 is an effort to increase student attendance. For years, Norwood has recognized that this is an appropriate effort. We've all likely seen around town every child in school, every day signs, and front yards, and stickers, and magnets. The state has adopted a new attendance law encouraging parental involvement and child attendance in school for the ages of six through 18. So we will be sending information home with students in the interim and progress reports explaining the difference between habitual, excessive, and chronic absenteeism, and when students reach specific levels, we'll be hosting meetings with the family and school officials to develop an attendance intervention plan. These are all requirements and obligations of part of Hospital 410. We want to say congratulations to Blake Howard. You may have seen him on the news this past week. He's a fourth grader up at Norwood U., and he was recognized for his actions. He, of course, watched much of the flooding that's taken place in Texas, and Blake felt compelled to help children who were experiencing trouble, and so he shared his plans to raise money with the Norwood U. PTA, and so it resulted in a program called Penn East for Texas. And so the Norwood U. PTA, as well as the community and the students, have raised hundreds of dollars that will be donated to the children of Houston. I would like to share with you, just with regard to the construction update, all the interior doors are in place in Sharpsburg Elementary, and we're working on a punch list for this space. We initially expected the second set of interior doors at each building entrance would be installed this month, but after the designer considered specific color choices that would honor the architecture of our buildings, the order was delayed a bit, so we anticipate the installation closer to Thanksgiving. We also anticipate using, we want that installation to happen all at one time rather than a delay where they would have to put components in and clean up, and then have students the next day. I also wanted to let you know that we've selected the HVAC system to be used at the middle school in the various applications depending on the classroom, by honoring the architecture and trying not to put drop ceilings in every classroom. Our last meeting involved reviewing the need for replacement of our water pipes in our intake at the middle school, replacing those galvanized pipes with new pipes, and reviewing our ADA accessibility by considering the placement of new water there. This is Homecoming Week, and of course, we love homecoming. The high school has celebrated all week. You heard some of that from Maureen, and that's all leading up to our big homecoming game tomorrow night versus New Richmond, and they will have a pep rally tomorrow, and then of course, the parade begins at 6:00. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much. Item 15 is the Great Oaks Report. I have a few things to share with you. So, Ms. Lynn Ellis was able to attend the meeting for us last week, and the Board of Directors approved over 1,400 members to serve on advisory committees for career instructional programs and operational centers. These experts help ensure that the skills taught in our programs are relevant to today's labor of market. In addition, they serve as advisors, teachers, mentors, and employers, so that's something new that they've just started and they're really excited about. The second I wanted to share is from Harry Schneider, the President and CEO of Great Oaks. He stated that Great Oaks began the year with 459 full-time associates, 620 part-time associates are on call for duty throughout the year, and they have 2,635 students enrolled on campuses, 780 are at Scarlet Oaks, 635 at Live Oaks, 623 at Diamond Oaks, and 597 at Laurel Oaks. They also have 15,302 students enrolled in their satellite programs, ranging from biomedical science and Project Lead the Way to teaching professionals and businesses on marketing management. Then the last thing that they had, which is very exciting, because I fly Delta all the time, Delta Airlines selected Laurel Oaks Aviation Program as one of the few preferred training programs in the country. As long as Great Oaks maintains their quality programming, Delta will assist with marketing, advisement, recruitment, employment, and donations. So, it's a great partnership that they can take advantage of because Delta is pretty close to home, so it's very good for them and for their students in aviation. Item number 16 is the avenues for success report, and I have nothing to share this month, but we'll be back hopefully next month with some news. Item number 17 is the Legislative Report. Mr. Miracle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to share some pending legislation in Columbus with you. The House Education and Career Ratings Committee heard proponent and opponent testimony on House Bill 21. The legislation addresses the verification of community school enrollment. The committee also heard proponent testimony in House Bill 98. This bill deals with the presentation of career information to students, and also opponent testimony was heard on House Bill 108, this legislation which will require one-half unit of instruction in financial literacy within high school curriculum. That's all I have to read.
Thank you. Item 18 is Meeting Notifications. All meetings listed below are to be held in the Board of Education Meeting Room unless noted at 2132 Williams Avenue, Norwood, Ohio, 45212. Item A is the Committee Meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, October 10th at 5:30 PM in the Norwood High School Mini Auditorium. Item B is the federally funded programs public meeting, which will be held on Thursday, October 19th at 5:00 PM. That's in room 213 of Norwood High School. And item C is our regular Board of Education Meeting for Thursday, October 19th at 6:00 PM, also to be held in Norwood High School Mini Auditorium. I would like to make a motion for items 18A through C. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Call the roll, please.
Horsley.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
There are no items, so we'll move on to item 21, Executive Session. For one, in accordance with ORC 121.22G1, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. And item four, in accordance with ORC 121.22G4, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation. I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session for item 21, one and four. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miracle. Call the roll, please.
Horsley.
Yes.
Miracle.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
We are in executive session at 6:34 PM.